Once you come to order, please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, can you please call the roll?
Ian.
Here.
Brainerhorst, here.
Banstra.
Here.
Skiba.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Score, here.
Okay, once again, our meeting is live via phone and the Internet, so if you are attending via phone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during the dedicated public forums. I would ask that you would please keep your microphones or telephones on mute until the time at which you want to speak. And if you're viewing the meeting presentation online, it's possible you may experience delays or loss of connectivity. If this occurs, the full meeting presentation can also be viewed at the City Appella website. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
Still move.
Score.
Brainerhorst, Banstra, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Danstra?
Yes.
Skiba?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score, yes. Ian.
Yes.
I need to announce we'll have a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 388.9, Paragraph 1, to discuss marketing and pricing strategies or proprietary information of a city utility. If its competitive position be harmed by public disclosure not required of potential or actual competitors, and if no public purpose would be served by such disclosure. And before we get into our meeting, we have our new city planner here, and I've asked Mike to introduce him to you guys. I don't know if any of you have met him, might have had the opportunity to do that, but Mike, go ahead and introduce him, and maybe you can give us a little info, give these guys a little info.
Well, Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to announce our new city planner is Mr. Gerald O'Donnell, who comes to us from Riverside, California. And if you take a look at tonight's agenda, there's a number of planning and zoning items that all of a sudden we've been able to list on the agenda and talk intelligently about the game plan. But Gerald brings a considerable amount of planning and zoning areas to the City Appella along with economic development experience as well, so he's a welcome addition to our staff. And after the meeting, appreciate if you take a few moments to introduce yourselves to Gerald. Gerald, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Oh, I have no mic, so I can't, obviously, the public probably can't hear me, so I'll be glad to stay afterwards and chat with you.
Okay, thanks, good to have you on board.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we have time for public forums, so anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda items, please, if you're here, come to the mic, state your name and address. Try to limit your comments to three minutes, or if anyone on the phone have any comments on any of the agenda items we have before us tonight. Okay, hearing none, we will move on. So the first subject for discussion tonight is a proposed economic development incentive for the Prairie Ridge commercial development. Mike?
Hi, just Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board for a presentation on the site. And what the purpose of tonight's discussion, as Mayor Ward stated this evening, is to talk about economic development incentives for the Prairie Ridge commercial development. Specifically, what we're going to be talking about is a conditional resolution of support for RVP holdings for the development. And just to orientate, council, maybe this is your first time with the terminology "conditional resolution of support", and the reason why this is necessary. In order to formally approve economic development incentives for a developer, the council would need to approve a development agreement. In order to approve a development agreement, the council would need to approve an urban renewal plan for the area. Both of those items we haven't done yet. And in general, when you talk about urban renewal plans, why we firmly believe that the proposed urban renewal plan for this development will be in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan, the legislative process typically takes about 60 days. And so the nature of tonight's conditional resolution of support is just simply a resolution that will state the city's intent if the developer meets certain obligations. So what it does, it gives the developer assurances that they can proceed with their development on there while we work through the legislative process to address the urban renewal plan and hopefully address a development agreement as well. Because in this particular case, the developer would like to be in construction on the development this summer as well. So with that, as Mayor Ward stated, the purpose this evening is to talk about the Prairie Ridge commercial development. We have a very exciting project at the Prairie Ridge commercial development. In fact, what's being proposed is a smash park recreation center. It's the first commercial entity that we have in the Prairie Ridge commercial development. And council, I believe is aware of this, but in case you're not, it's proposed to hold a variety of recreational amenities. We have some of them up there as well. In addition, it will also be a restaurant slash bar for the community as well. Now, overall, it's roughly a 22,000 square foot facility. It is important to note that the image that you see up here, the color rendition on Slide 2 for those who are at home, is the approved design permit that our CDC committee did approve for the development as well. So when we look at the proposed smash park, this is a regional recreational amenity, not only for the City of Pella, but really for Southeast Iowa as well. So very, very fortunate to attract this level of development in our community. Now, as far as other items that are being talked about with the developer on a preliminary basis, the developer is also relatively confident that they can attract a fast casual restaurant. Now, as far as the timing of these two items, the smash park would like to begin construction this year on the proposed smash park, including the public infrastructure for the commercial development. The fast casual restaurant, we're looking about two years after that, sometime right around the year 2024 is when the fast casual restaurant would be opened by, is the general timing on this as well. Now, when we talk about the onsite public infrastructure costs this evening, it's important to note that we will have a new street within the development, as well as a sanitary sewer extension, and also some stormwater improvements as well with that. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the comprehensive plan, I'm going to talk in terms of context of the urban renewal area, and we'll point out the urban renewal area here very shortly. But when we talk about the urban renewal area and the comprehensive plan in conformance with the comprehensive plan, it's very important to note, anytime you can talk about conformance of the comprehensive plan, we're talking about the entire comprehensive plan, not segments of it, the entire plan. In this particular case, when we look at the future used land map and also the key strategic goals for the City of Pella, one of the things that we will note, the comprehensive plan identified a lack of restaurant recreational type activities in our community and listed as a high priority. Fact that listed is one of the items that listed is a gap, which means the demand far out exceeded the supply of available entities back in 2014, and we believe that is still the case. And in particular, when we look at the comprehensive plan, we're showing one of the exhibits from the comprehensive plan. It identified Exit 40 interchange on this as a commercial development area, kind of a high priority area. At the time, it said there was vacant property in this area, and this should be an area of economic development purposes for the City of Pella, particularly for new commercial growth. So right in this general area was identified in the commercial comprehensive plan as an area of preferred growth for commercial development. So when we talk about the proposed smash park, regional recreational amenity, that's also going to be a proposed restaurant bar for the area as well. We believe it hits a key strategic goal with the City of Pella that was included in our comprehensive plan. We also believe it's located in the right spot as far as additional commercial growth that was identified in the comprehensive plan as well. So when we do present the urban renewal plan for this development to the city council, it is important to note that our findings on this are going to be strongly aligned with the city's comprehensive plan. And before we go on, I want to make sure I address any questions that the council may have as far as the comprehensive plan, eating and drinking establishments, and the general location of the proposed development. Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead, Mandy. Now, just to orientate everyone, looking at the development right here, Washington Street is Slide number four for those following at home, right here, is located down here. All work forward would be right over here. And the new residential development, the Five Field Road extension and the new residential development, Prairie Ridge residential development is located right up here. Now, the development that we're talking about, the commercial development, is going to be located right in here. And this urban renewal plan that we're talking about is basically going to be this green highlighted area. It's also going to capture portions of Washington Street that we have done here. But this will be the proposed Prairie Ridge commercial development for this and the urban renewal plan for the City of Pella as well. Now, one of the items that we want to make perfectly clear in planning for this development, we've done a considerable amount before, one of the items that we did do is we did conduct a traffic analysis. In fact, it's been done twice on this development. When Prairie Ridge was initially proposed at the preliminary planning stage, at the time, the developer was estimating that we'd have roughly 93 single-family homes, an additional 20 or so townhomes was planned for. And in addition, there was, what was at the time, was an unknown commercial development. And so we had an initial traffic study done on that concept on it as well. The tri firm that handled this was Beanster and Kim, and Mr. Bob Beanster handled the initial traffic analysis. Once we've had a known factor on the matter with the proposed smash park, we've updated our traffic analysis. What Mr. Beanster has came back to us is recommended what we would call offsite improvements for the development. And this has been intended to keep the traffic level or the traffic service levels, which you currently see on Washington Street, relatively at the same level as what they are today. Now, just to orientate, there's good background information on when we look at traffic capacity levels. Currently, on this segment of Washington Street that we're looking at, there's somewhere between 5,000 to 5,500 cars per day on this road. What Mr. Beanster noted in looking at the proposed smash park, he's estimating that it will be an additional 1,500 vehicles per day with the proposed smash park. When we look at the fast casual restaurant, he's anticipating between 1,500 to 2,000 vehicles per day for that. So we're looking at the traffic right now, as we know it, somewhere about 5,000, going up another 300 to 3,500 on it. So it's right at 8,000 to 8,500 vehicles per day on these two known items that are two known relatively assurance that we believe at this time. And so when we talk about the traffic improvements, from what Mr. Beanster's came back on, what he specifically recommended is that before a right-hand conjunction with Smash Park's opening in 2022, he would recommend a dedicated right-hand turn lane into the development on Five Field Road to be constructed in the year 2022. Now, what he estimated the cost of that was somewhere right around $70,000 to $75,000 for the right-hand turn lane that he had on that as well, or the westbound turn lane right here, $73,000. In addition, he stated before the fast casual restaurant opens up in 2024, he's recommending installation of traffic signals at this intersection. So this would be the intersection of Five Field Road and Washington Street. Overall, the estimated cost of the improvements is about $356,000. Now, just in case you're wondering where our proposed funding source is for the offsite improvements, on an annual basis, we do receive an allocation from the federal government, of the federal government's share of the gas tax for the City of Pella. And those funds are managed through what you commonly refer to as the CERCA or the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Association. They manage the distribution of federal funds for our community. What we're proposing to do is use our share of the federal gas tax for the extension or the construction of the westbound turn lane into the development, and also the installation of traffic signals out there. Now, generally, when you talk about this type of program and using the funds, what's called the STP funds on it, that comes at a funding ratio of about 80% by the federal gas tax, 20% local match. So with that, we put in our application for use on this from a program standpoint, and based on staff's initial review at CERCA, we believe it would be approved if we proceed with the project. With that being the case, of the $356,000 that we have there, the city's estimated cost would just be over $70,000 for the offsite improvements, which are necessary to maintain existing service levels when we're talking about a roadway transportation network on Washington Street. And I know that was a lot of information to go over. Is there any questions on projected traffic levels from the two known commercial entities that we have within the development?
Is that 80% refundable, or is that a grant?
That's generally a grant. There's conditions that will have to go through federally funded projects, and the project from a pretty finding standpoint is going to take longer, but it is generally a grant, so that would be their share, 20% would be our share. Okay, let's go ahead. As we stated here, with the commercial resolution of support, the developer would like to begin construction on the proposed smash park this summer. And from their standpoint, from planning standpoint, they would like to have a conditional resolution of support. And what this is, it's non-mining on the city, but it also is communication to the developer that tells them, if you do these items, we're prepared to do this in return for it. And so when we look at this and talk about the conditional resolution of support in the proposed smash park, well, once again, we do have the proposed, or actually the final plan, I believe, or the preliminary plan that we have for the development up here. You can see the proposed smash park is located right up here, Five Field Road, the extension is right here. The new commercial road, I believe, would be Goldenrod Court is what is being proposed for that, as well as Washington Street is down here. So with that, I'd like to go over what the key items of the conditional resolution of support would be. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. For those who are not home, I'm on Slide number six. Now, as far as the developer's responsibilities, it is important to know, when we talk about the onsite infrastructure of this, the developer would be required to construct all public infrastructure, so this would be the extension, the commercial road, plus the sanitary sewer line extension into the development on it, plus the storm sewer system. The developer would be required to construct all infrastructure at the city standards. So this would be the public infrastructure would be city standards what we have. They'd also be required to dedicate all infrastructure to the City of Pella. So once it's constructed, they would have to dedicate it to the City of Pella, and the city council would have to accept it. Now, with this, they'd also be required to have the smash park constructed by December of 2022 on it. Now, keep in mind, the developer's shooting for a tentative opening date of the proposed smash park in the spring of 2022, but from a development and discussions with them, we've established that this is be that the date on there would be December of 2022. Now, one of the items that we have from a financing standpoint that's critical, both parties on here, when we talk about the initial valuation of the proposed smash park. What we've established on there is the developer would be required to sign a minimum tax assessment of $5 million on it. So that means when we look at the property tax assessment in the building, from the property tax standpoint, the building would have a minimum assessed valuation of $5 million, and it also being subject to an annual 2% increase as well. And this is going to be very important when we talk about how we're financing public improvements and economic development incentives, so kind of log that one away, because we're going to be referring back to that one very shortly as well. In addition, what's also going to be part of the additional resolution of support is the developer is going to be required to construct a fast casual restaurant by December of 2024. For the restaurant, we'll have a minimum tax assessment of $2 million and the same 2% increase. So when we talk about valuations, the minimum amount is going to be $7 million on hand for the development as well. Before we proceed with the city's obligation, is there any questions on the developer's obligations? And we can refer back to these later on in the presentation as well.
Is that a minimum of 2% Michael?
Yeah, that's what...
Or is it, I mean, if the assessed value was higher than 2%?
Yeah, it's a minimum, it's a 2% annuals, what they're agreeing to.
A minimum of 2% annual?
Yeah, that's generally how it works, and so generally what happens on commercial development, not every year, commercial development receives increases, but what this is, is it has to be at least 2% on an annual basis.
So if the assessor isn't reviewing commercial property, do we have to sign an agreement? Or how does that get assessed when the assessor doesn't do that on a countywide basis?
Now, it's helpful, the development process is a pretty in-depth process. And when we talk about a development agreement, what happens is a minimum tax assessment is, I think this is a long-winded answer, but it should answer your question. With it, the county assessor is involved in the development agreement, because there's a schedule in there, and there's a form that they have to sign. And basically, with the plans that we'll have in the development agreement, we'll have the rough layout of the smash park in the development agreement. We'll also have a description of the size of the fast casual restaurant. The assessor has to make a statement that they agree with the minimum assessment that we've established on it. That's part of the requirements of the development agreement. And as a part of that, they'll also take a look at that schedule, and that's how they factor it into their network on it as far as the increases on it. So it's automatically done and kept up on it. But this takes a lot of involvement from the assessor. And it's been my experience, Kelly Kegory's been very good to work with on these types of agreements on it. But they're a part of this, they would have to review the development agreement. They would also have to sign a statement that they agree with the valuation established at the minimum assessed value. So hopefully, by doing that pre-work and having the assessor involved in this as far as signing the minimum tax assessment, that gets it into their system, and it's on it's just an annual checklist reminder on it. And they keep a schedule, what the actual valuation is, and what their required valuation is under the minimum tax assessment.
I think right now, commercial properties are reevaluated every two years, every other year. But so in that respect, there could be a 4% increase and would still fall within.
Yeah, and likewise, you know, maybe it's the accountant and me, but what we think about, at least my opinion, you know, this is going to be a great project for the City of Pella, so don't take any of my comments as being against the project by any means. But the truth of the matter is, the minimum tax assessment in this case is a protection for the city as well. Guarantees assessed valuation for the city, allows us to meet our financial obligations, and that's how we look at it as well. And so in the case that there is a decrease in commercial valuations, we'll have a minimum assessed valuation that says this is what the amount needs to be, and so again establishes an amount for the city at a minimum amount on an annual basis. And that's important when you take a look at the financial planning aspect of the project as well.
Michael, is there going to be something, I mean, goodness forbid, but things happen. If it falls flat on its face, for whatever reason, or there'll be something that will protect the city if it falls? I mean, will it be in a contract or in the development agreement or somewhere that if it's sold or something, that this agreement goes beyond the original contract with the developer on to the next?
Yeah, now, generally, on development agreements, it's almost standard course of business in all development agreements, just not the smash park, post-smash park, Prairie Ridge commercial development agreement. But on all city development agreements, they all have assurances and fallback, what we call fallback provisions in the development agreement. And this particular item, without getting into the weeds, but when we look at some aspects of the financial economic development incentives, there will be a general statement that will describe the proposed smash park, the operations of the smash park, the developer will state we're going to do this, this is what services is going to provide. There'll be a minimum tax assessment, and there'll also be provisions in the development agreement. What happens is what we would typically call breach if that isn't followed through with. And it's usually tied to the future payment of economic development incentives, and we'll cover that here in more detail very shortly.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All righty, well, let's go ahead and talk about city responsibilities. Now, once again, I want to state upfront, this is a very nice project for the City of Pella. We're very excited, this is a regional project. We believe it has the potential to spur additional growth for the City of Pella. So when you talk about these economic development incentives, keep in mind that this is a regional entertainment project, strongly aligned, staff believes with the city's comprehensive plan. So in negotiations with the developer, and looking at this matter, once again, we have commercial property. Keep in mind that commercial property is assessed very significantly different than residential property. Typically, if you were to look at the assessed valuation on your home, the gross level, and then look at the taxable valuation of your home, taxable valuation's about 54% of your total valuation. Corey, I'm putting you on the spot, but I believe commercial valuation's at 90% of the actual. So when you look at it as far as paying property taxes on it, commercial development is the preferred method or preferred recruitment rule of the cities, generally speaking, simply because of that matter when we look at the commercial property taxes on this. So when we look at the City of Pella's responsibilities, and this is again, developer has to come in, they have to build the smash park by 2022, they have to build a fast casual restaurant. They have to agree to a minimum assessment of $7 million, have to agree to a 2% escalator on an annual basis on that. In addition, they have to pay for all the public infrastructure and dedicate it to the City of Pella. If they do that, and if the city council approves a development agreement for the developer, then this is what our end of the bargain would be, is we would issue a $2 million incentive to the developer, and it would be paid as falls. $1.5 million would be paid 150 days after Smash Park receives its certificate of occupancy. And when we talk about certificate of occupancy, that means when you look at the building, and it's built, that's our building inspector handing off a certificate saying that it's been built in accordance with all city requirements and is ready for occupancy. So 150 days after that, we would have payment to the developer of $1.5 million. Since the fast casual restaurant is approximately two years after that, we shortened the time period on this, because our thoughts are, when we look at the fast casual, we'll do one bond issue for this amount. And what's being proposed is $500,000 30 days after the second or the fast casual restaurant opens and is operational or receives the city's certificate of occupancy on this as well. So that's a $2 million incentive for the City of Pella on this. Now, the last incentive, not the last incentive, but an additional incentive that's somewhat different than what we've done in previous development agreements. Previous development agreements, the incentives generally came from the City of Pella. In this particular case, this project has attracted strong, I would say, interest in the community. And as a part of this, what we have in there, if you look at the additional resolution of support, there's a nonprofit entity in town called the Community Betterment Organization on the matter, a very generous nonprofit entity established in our community. What our conditional resolution of support says is that we have a $300,000, what we call a pass-through grant from the CBO to the City of Pella. What we've stated is with that $300,000 grant, we are going to turn around and provide it to the developer on this. So from their standpoint, they have $2.3 million of what I call direct, relatively upfront incentives from the City of Pella, $2 million from the City of Pella, $300,000 from the CBO. Now, before we go on to this, the second portion of this, are there any questions about what we would call the direct upfront incentives for the development?
I'm glad to see some of the rest is taken off our back. Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about what we call the tax increment rebates. Now, one of the things, and I'd be remiss to state this, and I don't want to overdo this, because we also have a financial review of this as well. But if you recall, what we've stated is we're going to form an urban renewal district. And with the urban renewal district, that allows us to do a couple things. It allows us to encourage additional economic development. It also allows us to enter into development agreements to encourage that development. In addition, it's going to allow us to capture the incremental value of property taxes generated on this property. For all intent and purposes, if nothing else happens out there, and you only get these two entities, we'll have $7 million of increment that's generated on here. Now, what's being proposed with this is we're going to issue a bond for roughly $2 million. We'll have some bond issuance costs, that you'll see it's a little bit higher in our analysis. What the thought is, is with this initial investment that we're making in here from these two entities, is once our bond is paid for on here, what we have proposed is that there will be an additional incentive to the developer. Once we pay ourselves back and that initial $2 million bond issue is retired, the developer is also eligible for $2 million in what we call tax increment financing rebate revenues or TIF rebates on the matter. But what this would be is what we would do in paying back our bond issue is we would capture the tax increment financing revenues. That's about 75% to 80% of the city's total property tax rate, so that would be the school district and county as well. We would take that on an annual basis, pay our debt off on here, this $2 million. Once that's retired, the developer would be eligible for an additional tax increment financing rebate from the City of Pella for up to $2 million. But the development agreement, all those provisions in the development agreement can still be maintained. They would still have to operate the smash park, as the development agreement states. They would still be bound to open a fast casual restaurant on here. And from the city's perspective, what we would simply be doing at that point is we would be collecting the TIF revenues generated within the development, and we would rebate it to the developer at the time. We would only rebate what we received, up to a maximum of $2 million received. So I know that's a confusing and somewhat complex business arrangement, but is there any questions?
Is that a 20-year TIF?
It'll be a 20-year TIF district.
Will it be tied to our urban quarter?
As far as, well, yeah.
Our urban quarter TIF, will it be tied to that?
I think, just to back up, this will be initially approved as a standalone TIF district for the City of Pella. But I would be remiss if I didn't state, we have a lot of development going on in the City of Pella. And what Mr. Skiba, our council member, Skiba, excuse me, is referring to is what we did with our last TIF districts, and it was roughly, interesting enough, about 20 years ago, we had some development that was going on in the City of Pella. We took the commercial TIF districts and we linked them via the public rightways. We took the commercial TIF districts and we linked them via the public rightways. And with these districts, the reason we did that is because some of the TIF districts were developing at different levels. And so by linking them together, we can move funds within the TIF areas and leverage the city's risk. What we would look at doing, and it is on our list, and it's part of the issue that we're talking about tonight, and tonight's second agenda item, which is the Oskaloosa Urban, Oskaloosa Street Corridor, is somewhat closely related, that same concept will be discussed with the city council. And specifically, when you look at the Prairie Ridge Commercial Development that's occurring, we've already got the Lally Industrial Development that's occurring, we have an expired Oskaloosa Street Corridor right now that we need to have a new urban renewal district on it as well. That same concept, I would sit here and tell you right now, we should be considering to do again. So the answer is from my perspective, yes, in due time. But initially, when this is approved, it'll be just presented as a one standalone urban renewal district, but that's for later discussion as far as potentially linking all districts together, which I've been generally in favor of because I think it minimizes the city's development risk.
I can see it happening, just don't know why you haven't done it yet, Michael. You haven't done anything.
Yeah, well, and, you know, I don't want to get matters confused, but tonight when we talk about the Oskaloosa Street Corridor, that area needs an urban renewal district. And if you look at it generally, we got Lally on the east end of town, Oskaloosa Street right here, Prairie Ridge on the west end, we need to make these linkages on it, be able to support with it. And I think it could become a strong economic development engine for the city of Pella on a go-forward basis. So my answer is yes, but that's another concept for another meeting that we will be discussing, hopefully.
So just clarification, so any additional development in this area, so we're going to start out with seven million dollar minimum assessment to, but any additional development out there in that area, let's say, and who can't, I mean, it's not a big stretch to imagine that a Smash Park and something else is going to attract other development. We capture all the TIF on everything out there, correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Not just these two projects, anything else added. So if we end up with twenty million in development out there, we capture all the TIF?
We have a very good problem on our hands at that point in time.
Tax increment rebate, that's setting a precedent, right?
No, no, that's been the preferred method of development for the city of Pella for a long time.
I just haven't seen it stated that way.
Yeah, it's probably hit a little, you know, I'll give you some recent examples of TIF rebates. Boss Ridge on residential housing development was done, a rebate on the public infrastructure, Boslon and Estates on a tax increment rebate has been done as well, South Main was a tax increment rebate on it. So it has been done on this. And Lally, most recently, when they originally moved to Pella, we did also, Corey, I believe, have a TIF of Lally as well on that. So we have done, we have done, maybe the terminology is stated a little bit differently. We're on the right by me.
To follow up on the mayor's comments about what geographic area now is not included in, that's not being, that can be developed, that's not part of this, of that district?
You know, we'll have to go back to the math on it, and we do have the developers in attendance, and this might be a question. Manny, if you can go back to that first slide where we showed the green area. What our thoughts are on the answer, Councilmember Manny's question, is we got to segregate, and keep in mind if we're going to link stuff, we got to separate resident from commercial. So we're just interested in the commercial development. And it'll be this green highlighted area right down here. Now, Mr. Jay Dix, as far as the Smash Park, I think what we're looking at is generally this area, this.
About left there.
Yep, right up there. The undeveloped area, the fast casual restaurant will be somewhere located here, but there is additional space for additional development.
So there would be things that could be built there that would, to just what the mayor said, create dollars that aren't going to be designated to go somewhere else.
That is correct.
I think that's about nineteen acres, right?
Yeah, Smash Park is four point three.
Smash Park is four point three.
Fast casual is two acres. Yeah, there's four, there's four additional commercial sites after those two.
So nineteen minus seven.
So there's sub-stable?
Correct.
Oh, okay, I thought it was four.
So there's twelve acres left after these two for development.
Good.
That's about right on.
So the development does have a lot of potential, in my opinion. Let's go ahead, Manny. Now, one of the things that we wanted to share with council is we've done some pre-planning on this, and we have our financial advisor, Mr. Michael Maloney from DA Davidson on the matter. And what I would state is we charged Mr. Maloney with looking at this development. And in my opinion, which we needed to be, and anytime you talk about city finances, the rule is generally, the safe rule is you always operate from your service standpoint. And so the two scenarios that we charged Mr. Maloney would have is if we approve this development agreement, and what if nothing else happens out there? What if the only thing that happens is a Smash Park and a fast casual restaurant? That was scenario number one. And then we wanted to have a growth scenario, but a very modest growth scenario. So the four additional lots that we had out there, I thought it was four, maybe it's more, we said, what if only one of those lots gets developed, and what if it's another restaurant of some sort? And what if we had just an additional two million dollars evaluation? Mr. Maloney looked at this, and what we're looking at is anytime you have a development agreement, something the city council needs to weigh out is what is the cost of new development or the investment in new development? What is its impact on the property taxes for the current taxpayers? And that's the purpose of this analysis that we wanted to have. I would tell you with the certive funds and covering the offsite infrastructure, we feel very confident that we can absorb that within the city's budget, handle those costs without any impact on the city's tax rate. From the development agreement standpoint, under these two scenarios, and both of them are true, initially, we'll have a small deficit in year fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, with the proposed bond issues of forty-one thousand. And that's simply just due to the timeline from property taxes come online for the city of Iowa, takes about eighteen months after the development occurs. And so fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we'll have a small deficit. And from that point on, when you look at our bond issues in the development scenarios that we have, the development and incremental tax revenues from the development will pay, appears will pay the city's bond issue cost. Now, under these two scenarios, what we're calling the base case is no additional growth. Nothing else happens out there except the Smash Park, fast casual restaurant. What we would have at the end of the twenty years on this, as far as unobligated revenues, is we would zero ourselves out. There'd be, the development would pay off the city's bond issue, it appears. In addition, the rebate scenario to RDP would be just over one point six million dollars. That's what the financial model projects. If we had modest growth, which means just one additional commercial entity out there at two million dollars, what looks like is we would have a surplus of just shy of about a half a million dollars at the end of twenty years, and the projected rebate to RDP would be approximately two million dollars under that scenario. So from the planning standpoint, and again, when you approach these things from a modeling standpoint, it appears that the projected is the minimum tax assessment, keep that in mind, is high enough that it covers the city's debt obligations and the new development would cover the new debt cost for the city of Pella. And we do not believe it would have any impact on the city's tax rate by doing this from a debt service standpoint on the matter. In addition, under the modest growth with this, with the two million dollars evaluation, it appears it'd have a small surplus at the end of twenty years as well. So from a financial planning standpoint and a modeling standpoint, we tried to be conservative on this, and that was the conclusion reached by DA Davidson when they looked at the numbers and took the terms of the development agreement that we just discussed, that we have discussed tonight. Any questions on the analysis?
Oddball question, do you know off the top of your head where we're at on our general obligation bonding capacity?
Corey, help me out, but I believe as far as the general obligation, our max, if we did everything, was just shy of about forty-nine million.
Yep.
Okay. Outstanding debt issues for the city of Pella after this latest four million is about seven or eight, correct?
Correct.
So we have.
Not being pinched yet.
Not yet, no, no, we have forty, if we did everything, technically it's over forty million, and it's likely going to be higher once we get our new valuations out as well.
Thank you.
Do you know what percentage of our budget and support falls into a TIF area?
As far as, as far as the total revenues? We'd have to get, and that varies on an annual basis as far as the total revenues and the collection on, and in fact, reading the question, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, what the ultimate question would be is when you look at TIF revenues and extending out and dedicating revenues towards paying off, rarely in this case incentives in public infrastructure versus what is the operational, when it requires that, the operating support. We can get that information to you, but it's.
It'd be interesting, Kevin.
Yeah, you know, it's been my experience on that, there's no one size fits all. And really, when you look at the city of Pella and kind of answering that question, what we try to do is work with our departments on an annual basis, make sure we have the department of operating support covered on it as well. And from a standpoint, kind of answer that question offhand, is we look forward to additional development if things take off, and you're obligating, you know, for a set period of time, the incremental revenues to pay off obligations, the city of Pella also rebates on this as well, you know, what happens? Well, from a standpoint of financial planning standpoint, when you look at the city's A property tax rate, we have not increased our rate on that for, I think this is either twenty or twenty-first year on it. And when you look at our rates, generally, we are low. I'm also here to tell you that doing the development deal that we're talking about now, I don't anticipate that that's going to be a direct need to increase city property taxes on it based on what I see so far on it. I don't believe we're at that, and we can be happy to get the analysis, but I think ultimately, when cities address this, you know, they may be looking at it on, just in the context of what area that you collected TIF revenues and want those to property taxes. Generally, there's communities that put their whole town in urban renewal districts. And then what they do on an annual basis, and they divvy it up on urban renewal versus property taxes, and that usually places that put your whole towns in urban renewal districts, that point on, how much is going towards new growth versus current property taxes and current services is a key question. We're not there yet with it, even though we're talking about linking districts on the rightways. Generally speaking, most of Pella's not in an urban renewal district.
Mike, it's about twenty percent of our evaluation is in our TIF district, but we don't utilize.
No, we're fine.
We don't utilize full twenty percent. We have expired evaluations that are more than twenty years old, so we can, we can longer.
Thank you, Corey.
Yeah, just to, you know, looking at it, you have a lot of TIF areas, Oskaloosa Street Corridor, we're going to be talking about tonight, it's largely expired on it. So this is nice timing because we have the growth from past, past years that can support the property taxes. Now we're getting ready for the next pre-planning economic development period on it as well. All right, so let's go ahead to slide nine, Manny. Now, what we have, again, keep in mind, the conditional resolution support, non-binding, we are communicating with the developer is if you do these steps, we're prepared to do X to return. Now, with this, the developer would like to begin construction on both the public improvements as well as the Smash Park to be operational by the spring of 2022. In order to meet that schedule, we'll be proposing as an additional resolution of support on our May eighteenth meeting. So the purpose of tonight's discussion is we'd like to be able to address any concerns, questions that the council may have before we put this up for a formal vote on May eighteenth. And so what I would simply state at this point in the meeting is, A, we believe that this proposed development strongly aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. It appears from a financial planning perspective, the new valuations, new growth, what they're minimally obligated to do is enough to cover the city's debt service on the matter. Three, offsite public infrastructure, we believe we have a funding source for and will not have an impact on the city's tax rate on it as well. And what we want to make sure is before May eighteenth, that those were, in our minds, were the three big issues to address. But if there was any other concerns with the council, we wanted to make sure that we addressed it before we actually presented this item on May eighteenth. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions of the mayor and council, in particular, what we're interested in hearing about tonight is questions that we need to follow up on then.
This whole commercial nineteen acres or seventeen acres, that all falls within our utility area, right?
No, I believe with this, the RAC is going to be the electric service provider, and Iowa Regional Utilities Association is the water provider. Sanitary sewer will be in the city of Pella's.
I guess.
That's disappointing.
Well, yeah, I mean, that'd be huge.
That's huge, we know all about those battles.
Those over that far east would.
This isn't so much a question, but more of a comment, and I think it's impossible to factor this into a cash flow to city revenue, but so far, the Smash Park and the fast casual, those will also be subject to sales there to local option sales tax.
Yes.
Right? And so since it's retail there and not manufacturing or something like that, so I think that's a factor worth considering too, as to what can offset some, maybe some of the other costs that the city may have to get this up and running.
Yeah, absolutely, those are very good points. So the additional sales tax revenues for the city of Pella, we haven't even factored any of that in on the matter and so.
Hopefully, everybody read the press release that Smash Park put out, and the list of desired communities where they wanted to go. Pella seemed to be the outlier in the list. Quite about a million and a half people, so I think, I think that says a lot to me anyway.
I had a lot of people from outside of Pella Ridge out there, just excited about it, so it's great to have us.
All right, sounds like we should see you next week.
Yep.
Conditional resolution support.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Is that the shortest presentation of the night?
We got, we got a waste to go.
It'll be about ten o'clock.
Make it this way, I'll speed up if I start seeing a lot of head nodding.
Well, if all the projects are as exciting as that, it'll keep us awake. All right, so we're going to move on to the Oskaloosa Street Corridor development. It would take us all night just to read the report that we got.
Yeah. Alrighty, Mr. Mayor, for those following at home, I'm on slide number ten. And tonight's purpose is really, what we're looking at is twofold for our, A, for the city, when we look at the Oskaloosa Street Corridor, we talked a little bit about the story of Smash Park, but by and large, when you look at the Oskaloosa Street Corridor, and I'm talking from the main street, the main intersection of Main Street and Oskaloosa Street, basically out to the city's corporate lemons or just shy of right up to 240th Avenue, right around there, that is the current urban renewal area. That pretty much is expired for the city of Pella. So at bare minimum, I would tell you, regardless of what we would do, is I would like to have permission to go back and establish a new urban renewal area for that area, so we can capture the valuations there. And if there is additional businesses that we're interested in trying to recruit along those segments, we have a means to do it. That actually needs to be done, we need to form an urban renewal area. Now, what we're talking about tonight is we spent a considerable amount of time looking at Oskaloosa Street and redevelopment on Oskaloosa Street. And at the time, what we came up with in 2018, we hired a senior associates, they came up with a tremendous, with a really good plan for the city of Pella, we had public input meetings on it, I think a very nice plan. The urban renewal plan and coming up with what I would say the overall plan are very nice milestones on this, and I would tell you, it's not going to be a heavy lift established in the urban renewal plan. The heavy lift is on all the zoning, not all the zoning, that sounds really bad, addressing the zoning issues. And I would tell you, anytime you have new development, there's always zoning issues. And Oskaloosa Street, putting together a conference plan for Oskaloosa Street, that's no exception to the matter. So what we're here to talk tonight about is we want to briefly review the Oskaloosa Street Development Corridor Plan. We want to make sure that it's still a priority of the city council. And as we plan stuff, the reason I'm asking this is we go, we start making establishments because we need to get this urban renewal district established here. It's helpful from our standpoint to know that it's still a priority of the city council because we can mimic a lot of the objectives that were stated in the Oskaloosa Street plan that we already adopted, and we could put it in an urban renewal plan and pretty much be ready to go from an economic development standpoint. in the Oskaloosa Street Plan that we already adopted, and we could put it in an urban renewal plan and pretty much be ready to go from an economic development standpoint. The second thing that would tell us is, it's a priority, and we still want to go ahead with the plan as is, that we could really move on and addressing what I consider the most challenging aspects of the plan, and that's the zoning issues that are related on the plan. And again, it's not a negative connotation against the plan, and something that we have, it's like anything, when you talk about new development, new development oftentimes has zoning challenges on, on the matter. And when we look at redevelopment, particularly when you look at the city zoning code that by and large was adopted in 1976 on the matter, there may likely be zoning challenges as far as trying to have developers come and actually develop on Oskaloosa Street. So with that, just as additional background, again, these guidelines, or the plan was adopted by council in 2019. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy.
Is that, is that-
Yeah, let's go ahead, yeah, come, go back, Mandy.
Is that the exact same boundary as the other one?
Now, the, the Oskaloosa Street corridor, Corey, help me out here, but I'm thinking that the urban renewal plan for Oskaloosa Street corridor went out probably at most to, right around 204, not 240th Avenue, which would be the South Gate industrial area-
Yeah.
-and Oskaloosa Street, so right, it just shot, shot shy of Pella Christian. This one goes all the way out to the city's corporate limits on what they were, what we looked at. Okay.
Mike, I have one question before you start, you know, you've got the bullet point where the council developed the guidelines in December of 2019, and that's when 4/7th of us weren't here, you know, and that. So does that, guidelines, is that just conceptual things? Or what, what strength, or what, what responsibility, what do we have to adhere to in those guidelines?
Yeah, and that's an excellent question, and I think that's part of the issue what we're looking to talk about tonight, is we want to make sure from our standpoint, A, it's still a priority of the City of Pella. What I would tell you in answering that question, my own personal opinion, take it nothing more than just my nerd eating, I look at it as, we've had tremendous, I mean, we're very, very fortunate to have the level of development that we have in our community. But one of the things that we can't ignore or overlook is our existing infill development. And the reason why you'd want to take a look at infill development is, one of the largest obstacles to any new development is always public infrastructure. When you look at infill development, the public infrastructure by and large is already there. If you were to look at the Oskaloosa Street corridor area and even expand out some of the older parks in Pella, we've already got the public infrastructure there, we've already made the investments in there. And in my mind, it's logical to look at infill development. And it's also logical to look at your development before things become an dilapidated state on here, because once that happens, it's very difficult to reverse those trends. So I'm a big proponent of infill development on the matter, believes drawn in, and I believe something that should be, from a planning standpoint, should be done. Now, from my perspective on the Oskaloosa Street corridor, what we want to hear, or not want to hear, but we'd like to hear, it's still a priority, and maybe if we look into guidelines on there, what we want to need to associate is, is our philosophy towards infill development versus the guidelines in the Oskaloosa Street corridor, we want to make a distinction between the two. And from my perspective, what I'm looking to hear about tonight, and we don't have to answer everything, because what I would say is, when we look at the priorities, there's going to be a number of zoning recommendations for the plan. Some of them, you know, there may be a consent to council, there may not be, and that's okay. But originally answering your questions on here, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to make sure it's still a priority, make sure we still want to do infill development. So when we have our action steps back there with the Planning and Zoning Department, we're not spinning our wheels and going off on a tangent without checking with you folks up front. That's what we're hoping to hear, or verify tonight. So I don't know if I answered your question, it's a long-winded answer, but, A, to address your point, more new council members, we want to make sure this is still a priority, and if it's not, or if there's a change in objectives, we want to know that upfront, rather than start on zoning changes and then come back three months later to find out it's not a priority. All righty, let's go ahead, Mandy. Yeah, and I believe we've covered a lot of this right here, but when you look at the, part of the plan, we did do a market analysis on a number of items that were looked at on the Oskaloosa Street corridor with this. And in general, when you look at the plan, and I'm going to get the geographic boundaries a little mixed up, but when you looked at the intersection of Main Street and Oskaloosa Street, and then you went down to basically Clark Street, that was viewed as an entertainment district on there, and what was recommended was entertainment venues. Similarly, it was noted the comprehensive plan that was lacking, eating and drinking establishments that we had in there. There's even recommendations for brew pubs, microbreweries on here, food truck venues, public meeting spaces. What was envisioned with the plan was a beautification plan on the old power plant site. That's what we call the western half of the plan. And the eastern half of the plan, just generally speaking, when they look at things that were lacking in our community, what was thought was, there was room for growth for an office and office park on the eastern half of the plan. And the goal with the office park would be to get some of the professional office uses, hopefully have those entities relocate off the square, go down to the Oskaloosa Street, and free up some additional area for potential retail in our downtown. It's a big picture concept on the matter. So let's go ahead, please, Corey, or Mandy. And Lee, I've, I've covered this, we also did a streetscape master plan for this, and that focused on what we would call the western half of that, which is the Main's, Main's, Main Street and Oskaloosa Street intersection out to roughly Clark Street. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. The heavy lift on this matter is the zoning issues. And zoning, keep in mind, any type of change that you make on zoning, there's going to be at least two public hearings on the matter. And depending on council's view on that particular ordinance, there could be multiple readings conducted at the council level. So there will be, there's going to be public hearings, there's going to be neighbor notifications on the matter. And so when you do zoning changes, these are the types of items that you really need to measure twice, cut once on. They take a long time, because there's a lot of implications on it. But generally speaking, some of the zoning changes, and we want to make sure that everybody's on board before we start getting into what I call the weeds, weeds portion of the project, that's the zoning issues, is on the western side of the plan, what they called for, allowing by right, microbreweries, brew pubs, and I actually, cocktail lounges, which is the terminology that the city code calls a bar, they would be allowed by right. Now currently, if you were to look at what was proposed with the Oskaloosa Street plan, those three entities, brew pubs, microbreweries, and bars require a special use permit. And for council members that may not be familiar with the terminology special use permit, what that is, is under your zoning code, and they tend to have a special use permit, is to identify those uses that may be good fits in, in a distinct zoning district, but it really depends on the location on it. So what happens with the special use permit is, if an entity wanted to open up a bar or a microbrewery in this area, they would have to file an application with the city's Board of Adjustment. We would send out notices to all neighbors within 200 feet of there, and there's criteria to grant a special use permit under city code. And one of the impacts you look at is impacts on neighboring properties. And so when you look at the property owners that would be impacted around there and notified, they would have a form to come to the city and voice any concerns that they would with the proposed development before a special use permit was granted. The Board of Adjustment has wide authority in granting special use permits, there could be operating restrictions, use restrictions, you name it, on issuing a special use permit. And just as, as they issue a special use permit, they can take it away if there's non-compliance as well. So it's a conditional use, it's a big thing. Now, how this impacts development is oftentimes when you talk to people that would like to do a microbrewery, bar, brew pub, they get hesitant on making investments on those types of entities when they realize that, if someone complains, or if there's an issue of non-compliance with it, their license could be revoked by the City of Pella. And so, what the Oskaloosa Street corridor did for this general area, when we look at those types of uses, they stated and recommended that those should be allowed by right instead of a conditional use or a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment. So that would be one of the items that could have. The second item, and I'm going to get this a little promptly off, but there's currently uses that are permitted in our community and commercial zoning districts that would no longer be allowed in these districts on it as well. And the key issue is, is if you have a use down there and you're operating in the district, and then all of a sudden, there's a zoning change, and you become what's called a grandfathered use, which means if it changes in the future, or you cease operations for six months, you may not be able to resume those operations again, those could potentially have concerns as well. So we have both the changes, modifications from a use standpoint, new uses that were previously required oversight by the city's Board of Adjustment, but no longer. And then you had existing uses that may no longer be permitted by right, and those uses that are currently in place would be at grandfather status. So that's kind of a high-level overview on that. Any comments on the use standpoint before we go on?
Didn't Nader Launders come in to the special use permit?
What's that?
Didn't Nader Launders come in to the special use permit process?
There's been a number of entities that, that have special use that are similar, Peanut Pub uptown. I forget, the Wine House, I believe, is their second special use permit on, on their bars on it as well. So again, you know, the special use concept is, but you know, in particular, when you talk about bars and microbreweries and brew pubs, that has been an issue, I, just in past experience on it, and that's always been a point of conversation. And again, this is going to be a philosophical item for the City Council, as we consider redevelopment on there. And zoning changes, this is where the rubber meets the road, is what is our philosophical approach towards these things? What we're trying to do under the Oskaloosa Street corridor plan, so we're trying to create an entertainment district under there. One way that you create an entertainment district is you create certainty. And you start having stuff instead of a conditional use, which states if you appear to be an okay use, and you're objected to additional city guidance, you can operate versus, this is your use, you're allowed by right, and as long as you build your building up and conduct that use there, you can operate by right. It's more of a certainty for developers. For my standpoint, and I'll be brief on this, the second item that we need to check is, in our zoning changes, we could go through and mess around all we want with uses. The other thing I think we need to do is, we need to talk to consultants and developers that would actually go down and develop on here. And you need to take a look at things like setbacks, lot sizes on this. And I anticipate there's going to be changes or recommended changes, in fact, our initial consultant recommends, or changes, they had all sorts of, they had changes on what I call the bulk district regulations for this as well. That's going to be very critical that we get ahead of this and we identify those, and we have somewhat certainty as we look at redevelopment options, we talk to people that have done development, have consultants, we check on things like setbacks. Because the last thing we want to be doing on here is, on every single item in here, why do you want to do that and get ahead of that upfront? If you're serious about redevelopment, and you, you could have all the economic development incentives in the world, but if you can't permit it by your zoning district, it's useless on the matter. So this is something that we need to do upfront. I would tell you, this is something that can be above and beyond, that we need to hire consultants to help us out on the bulk district regulations for, for these areas. And that needs to be tied to the types of businesses that we're after in trying to recruit for Oskaloosa Street. That's my perspective, and that's part of the zoning, zoning aspect, and it's part of what I call the heavy lift aspect of this project. All right, and again, economic development incentives, and to me, that's, that's probably the easiest part of the project, because that's an urban renewal area, you can make a strong case for Oskaloosa Street being compliant with the city's comprehensive plan, it's one of our main commercial districts. And that's really a secondary issue, and that's been something that's been done consistently for the past 20 years on the matter. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay, and I think that pretty much wraps up our presentation for this item. And again, we're looking for overall direction, and what I would tell you, if we hear yes tonight, yes to us means, we're going to go out and start talking to consultants to assist us on this in what we call the heavy bulk district aspect of this. We'll be out talking, potentially making plans, and coming back to you guys with an action plan as far as the city zoning regulations, the economic development portion of this, and an overall game plan on involving the Planning and Zoning Commission on the front end to make sure we have a seamless process as we consider potential zoning changes to the city zoning code. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation on this item. More than, we're interested in you guys' feedback, and particularly the direction that we want to go with the Oskaloosa Street corridor.
Okay, thanks, Mike. What did we, what did we spend on the comprehensive report that I saw on this?
Wasn't it about 16,000?
Corey, I want to say, I thought it was like 20, it might have been, it was, I thought it was between 20 to 25,000. It may have been, we'll get that information, I'd hate to-
Well, I, I don't want to kid anybody, I did read every page, every line on every page, but the things that we just talked about, were all of those things in that-
Yes.
-that plan?
Yes.
So when you say we need to hire consultants and stuff, is it just an update to what we had done? Or are we talking about starting over?
No.
Was the, was the zoning changes and all of that included? Or was this just a, a dream, what it could be without looking at the details?
From my perspective, the level of the consultants directly related to the perspective of what the City Council wants to do. City Council wants to do the different objectives on the Oskaloosa Street corridor, that consultant role could be expanded. What I would came in, in assuming that the council wanted to proceed with the plan as is. Mayor, the reason I'm saying we need to hire consultants, Snyder's does some overview zoning changes on the matter. Now, would I feel comfortable going with all those zoning changes to you folks next week with the ordinance and saying, this is recommended by the consultant? No, I'd like to vet it out, I'd like to have a consultant come in, look at these lots, specifically when we talk about things like microbreweries on there, take a look at actual microbreweries, how much parking they need, what's the city regulations are, what the setbacks are for this area, what the public right-of-way space is for these areas. And when we look at the zoning changes, and I'd like to vet it out, and I'd like to also explore with developers on this matter. So when we say we're after these items here, we have relatively certainty that we've identified locations where they are, and we have relatively certainty that if someone wants to do this, they could actually accomplish it, particularly our redevelopment. That's the thing I'm nervous about this plan is, is the zoning work on it. So the level of work, they've just been on a preliminary basis, I have questions on the zoning changes, and that's where I'd like to spend, assuming that the same philosophical approach on the Oskaloosa Street corridor is in place with the City Council, that's where I'd like to spend our zoning assistances on the redevelopment aspect, to make sure that our zoning court will support this from a bulk district, bulk regulation standpoint.
Mike, what do you say, infill? Are we just talking about empty lots, or are we talking about lots that might have a house on it, or a different building on it currently? Because if it's just empty lots, there's probably not a, there's a handful.
Both.
Both.
We're talking about areas that may have an existing use on it, that could be something different under our plan.
So is it just, we are, we're just looking for restaurants, brew pubs, that's what we're looking for? Or is it, that's just kind of the feel or the idea?
Kind of an East Village kind of vibe, I hate to use that. Also, just one of the main thoughts behind this too, is we, we want to get this in place so that when the development starts, it isn't as muddy, it isn't as laborious. If, if we allow these, um, microbrewery, brew pubs, uh, you know, that, and cocktail lounges to come in by right, then, then we're eliminating a whole lot of, of extra steps that, that we wouldn't have to have. Another thing we talked about in that corridor is having buildings that have offices below, but living area above. So it would become a very walkable area for people too. So, and, and Mike touched on it too, is, you know, we need to, at some point, entice, if you would, perhaps some of the service industry that's downtown to come, to perhaps move onto the corridor and open up some more retail space. Now, it, it could be, and should be, and hopefully will be, very unique, a very unique district. And I just think that it's a, a great opportunity for us, it gets 8,000 cars a day. It's something that I believe we need, we need this type of district. Uh, one that doesn't roll up its carpet, you know, quite early in the evening, it would be something where you would go until later in the evening.
Well, I don't think you're too far off by calling these Villages, because they've been called this, the Villages of South Pella, the, the west side. But that's the part that I see almost the most challenging part of it, other than the, the old power plant, I think that's up and running, that's the, the, I think it's- I think that's up and running, that's the, I think it fits right into that. But you look at the exist, even they call that the most potential for development and redevelopment and entertainment. I might looking at, like, looking at lawnmowers for entertainment, but not everybody does. But the businesses that are there right now do not fit that absolutely. And that's where you get into, I think adding the microbreweries and those kind of establishments to be there by right is kind of the easy part. I think the harder part is to say, no, you can't do this type of business there anymore.
Not as a new business coming in.
But for selling an existing one.
In selling an existing one, is my assumption?
I think that's where economic strategies are going to come into play.
Yeah.
And how we go about that. I was just looking, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds in this because we have limited time. But I noticed they have economic strategies, TIF, of course, but tax abatement, seventy-five, sixty, forty-five, thirty, fifteen. So, describe that just a little bit, Michael.
Yeah, but what I'm familiar with tax abatement on is generally, I mean, that is an option for the city to adopt, which called urban revitalizing, revitalization area and offer tax abatement. Generally speaking, our preferred method has been through TIF as opposed to tax abatement for commercial development. And the reason why is when you look at the TIF, even, you know, economic analysis, when you look at it, is roughly about seventy-five to eighty percent of our levy good debt is dedicated towards the TIF. Remaining twenty-five percent still goes to the debt service through the respective tax entities. So it's generally, you know, preferable method on it. Tax abatement at the time is, you know, different approaches by cities. What we've always thought of in the past when it came to tax abatement is we've thought, and the discussions have been internally, that that can be a little bit more difficult to justify an absolutely complete tax abatement. Opposed to, it doesn't mean it's the wrong method, it just hasn't been done in Pella. And what we have talked internally at the staff level, when we talked about tax abatement, we've talked about potentially future blighted areas to encourage development on that too. And what I would share, you know, my initial thoughts is if you're looking at urban revitalization, tax abatement, that might be a better suited mechanism for residential type development, redevelopment on it, not necessarily commercial.
I didn't know if that could be more effective to incentivize current property owners in that district to sell to a developer, and the incentive would be to the developer. I don't know, I'm just, maybe we shouldn't be getting into the weeds in this.
Again, you know, just in general, if you look at tax abatement, if someone puts an improvement up there, the taxes are abated. Oftentimes, when you're looking at development, in particular in commercial development, it's not necessarily tied to what your, you know, that direct benefit, the economic development could be a little different form, shape, and size, that you may need some sort of tax increment revenues to support on an ongoing basis. So, the thought is, is by going to TIF on commercial areas, it gives us greater flexibility on commercial rather than abating taxes. When you look at residential, you're talking about particularly older areas in Pella, where there may be some dilapidated housing, they're already just paying about fifty percent on the valuation of their home, that abatement may go further in those areas on smaller projects.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not a big tax abatement fan.
I don't either.
TIF, I'm a big fan of TIF, and I think that TIF would be the ideal way to promote the commercial. But I do think potentially tax abatement could work, as we said, on some older house to incentivize somebody to fix it up, some portion of tax abatement. Probably would work in that scenario, but on the commercial, no. So I think if I remember right, I think for me, one of the key components of this is the beautification project that we talked about on the old power plant side. And it seemed like when we, when at our budget session, we kind of put that in the budget to go ahead and get that done with some engineering costs this year and then doing it in the next fiscal year. So, I guess to answer your question, do you all remember that? So I think that should tell you that we support keeping this, you know, keep exploring.
Okay.
That's my take on it.
And I think when it comes to projects involving TIF, we need to be aggressive. The legislature routinely rattles their sabers about just the TIF.
Did they do anything with that, by the way?
Not yet.
Comes up every time.
Although they were, they were talking about, what I was reading is not letting, like, a blighted go past twenty years was really the biggest TIF deal, I think.
They usually have some separate spin every year.
Yeah, the backfill of property taxes is the one that I've seen a lot of literature on. So anyway, I think, I think what we're saying is, yeah, let's, let's keep exploring it. Okay, anybody, any other comments on this? All right, moving on to our third design review district, an update to the manual.
Hi, this is Mr. Mayor. For those following at home, I'm on slide number fifteen. And this request has came to us from the Community Development Committee. And specifically, what they would like to do is update the city's design manual. And I think the overall intent of the committee is they'd like to modernize the manual. It's been a number of years, it's been over a decade since the manual has been updated. And one of the things that they would like to do, as Pella and the development occurs, new development in town, they would like to update the standards on the development. And I think there's a perception when people develop in Pella, Corey, help me out, you've been to numerous, Jared, too, CDC meetings, that it's the Gable approach for architectural design on it, and we're limited to that. What they'd like to do is update their manuals, have examples of other acceptable forms of Dutch architecture. And there's also some discussions on maybe some different standards, more flexibility on different areas of town as well. I think these are all good thoughts. The committee had a discussion on this after what they were done approving the Smash Park design on it. And we told them we would be in touch with you folks, just get your initial thoughts on it. But I think it's something that probably should be done, particularly as we look at new development in town. And one of the things I would just like to, I'm not sure council is aware of this, and Corey's speak out if I'm wrong, but when you look at design standards, I'm having a hard time thinking of another town in Pella that has design standards for all their commercial districts in the state of Iowa on this as well. So when we look at it, and you talk about developments, competitive business on it. When a developer comes in the door, it's not only the financial incentives and what is the cost of the development, it's the time of getting through the process as well. If there's more consist, not more consistency, but if our manuals are updated and it can be easier from a development, development standpoint, you know, from staff's perspective, this is beneficial to us. And it's something that we certainly not arguing against design standards in Pella. But the reality is, is we're in the minority when it comes to formal committees approving design standards when you look at competition from other cities as well. So I think, you know, from our standpoint, it makes a lot of sense to update the manual and get it in good form and get it to what I call development ready. And but we want to make sure council is in agreement with that position before we formally proceed with the committee working on updating their manual. So, Mr. Mayor, we're looking for feedback on this item.
Will this be a committee of the CDC or strictly the CDC or staff and CDC or?
Adds up with the council, how you'd like to proceed with it.
Well, the specific request was to hire an architect to look over that, if I remember right, you know, and then. I, I think that's a good idea. I would just say that I like the idea of the modern Dutch. I don't think there's too many architects in the U.S. with a modern Dutch architect degree. I think they're really going to have to look for someone that really wants to incorporate the vision of Pella to be unique but modern. And if we do spend the money, I hope we spend the time finding that right person while stated.
Yeah, I think this is a really good idea to get it updated. Because we're going to be faced with the way, the way things are going, the developments that we're attracting, we're going to be faced with a lot of these moving forward. I think it'd be great to have it updated.
I feel like if we don't, we could run into some, you know, developers that want to do stuff that comes into, you know, conflict with the existing.
Yeah, imagine that.
We can eliminate or reduce bureaucratic items on the matter. I think it's in everybody's best interest on it. So I guess to answer the question, this is totally up to the council, the formation, how we go about it. CDC already has three members that I think assigned to work on the committee. They'd like to hire an architect on it. I will state this, they were very impressed with Shift Collective and the work that they've done in Pella on this. And Shift Collective, for those of you that may not be aware, they designed South Main, the Pella Market, and Pella Smash Park on it as well. So, that was their, their thoughts initially, but they welcome council's involvement on this. And this is really frankly, up to us on how we go about it. Do we want to have a member from the council sit in on the committee?
I think so.
Volunteers, can I see a hand up? Don't make me appoint you.
I'll volunteer. I'm the best suited, I'll do it.
Everything needs a rug.
I knew it crossed my mind.
So, move forward, Dave. Dave will be council.
Fantastic, thank you. Next two items, let's talk about Second Christian Reformed Church on here. What we have is a request, in case the council is not aware, our plan of closing on the Second Christian Reformed Church, basically everything up and highlighted up on the big board. It will be, under our original agreement with Second Christian Reformed Church, will be owned by the city of Pella. How the agreement was structured is in 2019, we approved it. And at that time, I believe we purchased the green highlighted areas with our first half payment. The blue highlighted areas were operated by Second Christian Reformed Church. They are currently in the process of building the new sanctuary at the intersection of Oskaloosa Street and 240th Avenue. And what they've reported to us is they needed a little additional time to complete their sanctuary. So we have two options on it, we can either go ahead with the closing on June first, and then they ask potentially about renting the facility from the city of Pella. Or one of the easier options is just to delay the closing and delay it to later date to when they can build their sanctuary, so we don't have to mess with rental agreements. The date that they'd like to have is September first to close on the blue highlighted areas in here. Now, in full disclosure, with the amendment, we're also going to be addressing an item that deals with fixtures within the church. And specifically, there's been a request by Second Christian Reformed Church is, at the time when we purchased the building, ultimately, what we had for long-term plans on this was an additional public safety complex for their, when it was time to expand the city's public safety complex, that was the general area. What they made a request is for the fixture items that are city property or will be city property when we close on it. They would like to have the first opportunity before demolition occurs to remove those items, such as ceiling tiles and other items that would be of value to the, to the church as well. And so that would also be a part of the second amendment that we would have with the agreement. The first part would back the closing need up to September first. And the second item would address furniture and fixtures and potentially give the church priority to remove furniture and fixtures, items that are permanently attached to the building before demolition, if it were to occur.
This, the only question, our summer parking issue with the downtown work? Will that, I don't know, through your plan, I'm using that?
That's a good question, Mayor. And what we're going to be talking about is on June first on parking. I can't tell you from the contractor's standpoint on loose port, it's going to take him approximately three weeks if the materials onto the job site to start the project. The first project's going to be replacement of the sanitary sewer. They're not going to be closing the parking lot while they're replacing the sanitary sewer. So it could correspond rather nicely, by the time they get that sanitary sewer project done, where we would be able to close up this parking stuff for access for, even going to September first.
Yeah, I mean, why, that would be fine, but it was easiest to delay it to September one.
All righty, let's go ahead with the last item that we have for policy and planning tonight. And this item, we're going to be talking additionally during our May eighteenth meeting on additional land planning. And I'm going to preface the comment is, our department is very busy with development and items in general. The concept that we're about ready to talk about tonight deals with basically development of land on the matter. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get ahead to where we're efficient at the staff level, but we also want to maintain our customer service that's been provided to the community. One of the challenges that we have with land development, particularly when you deal with, I would say, the non-professional developers, and these would be people that aren't necessarily used to the city's development process, have lots of questions on the matter, maybe looking to split off a portion of their property and give to their children. And one of the items that we have with this is there seems to be a good deal of questions involved and time that's involved at city staff. And so what we're trying to do from our standpoint is just standardize our process and really have a one-stop review process for everyone involved. And where I'm going with this is, when you look at the typical pilot survey that may be happening within our one-mile jurisdiction or the development matters, what typically happens is we meet with the property owner. Once the property owner, they have a general idea on it. Oftentimes, the plan's drawn on the back of a napkin or a piece of paper on the matter. They meet with our staff, our staff meets with myself. Oftentimes, we have to get the city attorney involved because there's an interpretation of code on it. We report back to them, we give them the initial verdict or the direction, then they change the question and ask a different what-if question. And oftentimes, when someone, they meet initially with our staff, they contact other people, such as the Public Works Department, and talk to them, and there's conflicting information going around from staff standpoint. And it seems like it's just not an efficient process because it involves numerous staff members. What we're proposing to do is, when someone has a land development issue, is they would fill out what we call a land development application or a concept plan. That would give us a concept, what are you doing? It would give us basic information that we would have. We would take that application, and the application's going to do on Monday. And by Friday of that week, we would give information and direction to the property owner. Generally, they would be instructed, either you proceed with what's called a pilot survey, or you need to go to a formal subdivision on the matter. And we would also do a preliminary view of public infrastructure. So we would try to collectively have applications due, we would distribute to our staff. Everyone would be looking at the same application, everyone would have the same information from staff standpoint. We would get back one response to the developer at that point in time. And with that, we think it's a much more efficient process, and it also helps us streamline our process and really standardize the process. If you look at it from our standpoint, you know, just talking, big picture, look at the items that we just talked about tonight, talking about a major development that's occurring on the western portion of our, our community. We currently have applications in for over four hundred subdivisions that would house up to four hundred new housing units for the city of Pella. We have an industrial development that's going on the east end of town. We have a redevelopment that needs to happen on, a redevelopment plan that needs to happen on Oskaloosa Street. And from our standpoint, from staffing efficiencies, what we're trying to do is become efficient on our end. We also want to get good information back to the developers so it isn't segmented, you know, for instance. Let's go talk to the planning and zoning staff about this. And then potentially, if there's mention that there may be public infrastructure, we'll go and contact Denny Byer and get something from Denny Byer and Public Works on this. And then before long, everyone's drug in just an endless, what I feel, chasing our tails on the matter. So what we're hoping to do is really standardize our process and be efficient in the times that we spend on these land development processes and give good direction to the property owner upfront. I would also tell you, for the professional developers, this really is an issue because they realize the city regulations and they realize the process and they're used to it. What the issue is, is people have been through first time on this that have lots of questions on it and keep changing. And we joke in our staff, we call it the what-if questions. We get a lot of those on it. What we're hoping to do with the application is get them focused on one plan. We would still meet with them upfront, both if I identify what is your most likely scenario? That's the scenario that we're going to give you initial direction on. And what we're hoping to do is also put a little skin in the game upfront with the property owner, a twenty-five dollar fee on it. And with that twenty-five dollar fee, we would put it towards the permit fee or the pilot survey fee, which is twenty-five dollars, a plumbary plant's two fifty, and a final plant's two fifty. That fee would go towards one of those if, once it's approved on it. So it wouldn't be a fee that they'd have to pay anyway. But it puts a little skin in the game, and what we're hoping to do is get the property owner to focus on, what is the most likely scenario that you're proposing, instead of this. what is the most likely scenario that you're proposing instead of this three to four options and constantly changing options on it. And from our standpoint, the reason why this is important is oftentimes when you're talking about land development, you're talking about getting the city attorney involved. City attorney's hourly rate's over $210 an hour on the matter. And it doesn't take long to burn a $25 fees, but one of the things that happens is when you start getting multiple what we call what-if questions, we spend a lot of time with the city attorney and trying to get back to these folks. So A, what we'd like to have is standardized concept map from them to see what they want to do. We want them to focus on the most likely scenario. We want to have one review at our staff standpoint for efficiencies. And we want to have one opinion going back to the property owner. We think it's going to give them better direction and it's going to be a much more efficient process on it is what the concept is. Now in full disclosure, on May 18th, we're also going to be talking about fees and other processes for planning and zoning. Well, my thoughts are is I wanted to talk about this because this would be a change. We wouldn't start it right away, but if city council on May thinks, yeah, you know, this is something we need to do, we're likely going to have to amend some other things on planning and zoning department. So we would put out the notice on July potentially that we would start this. Now I can tell you, in considering this item before I solicit your feedback, I've already got responses from an attorney that we work with frequently on it. And I think he had a lot of good points that we should consider. One of his observations was is that we should be encouraging development in Pella on the matter. And we need to make sure he understands about the efficiency on it as well. But one of his general observations was, is if you look at all the development that's occurring in Pella, his belief was that we should probably have one person dedicated towards new development, getting people through the processes, whether this is land development, CDC, you name it, is dedicated. And it would easily pay for itself as far as a staffing standpoint. So he understood the needs while we're trying to do it from an efficiency standpoint, but he also wanted to make sure it didn't cause more consternation on the property owner's standpoint as well with the process. And one of his recommendations was for the city council, before we do this, to go out and survey developers, surveyors that have been through the process, get their feedback on it. And I thought it was all very good information, but ultimately from our standpoint, the reason I'm telling you this is likely as this thing progresses through this and we implement it is you're likely going to be contacted by folks. And I thought there was validity in his comments on it and I appreciated it, thanked him for it. But I also think we're at the point right now where we have to become more organized. Not that we're not organized, it's not that. But when you constantly have people contacting you, changing scenarios, asking questions, and then you're trying to get back to them on three or four scenarios and coordinating, then that overwhelms our staff. And what we need to have is a little bit of both. We need to become more organized upfront, have the property owner focus on their most likely option on it. That's the option we review. And I think we can get a better direction back ultimately in the end. And it's ultimately going to save them time in the end. But from our standpoint, from a small city standpoint, and just to address the manpower issue, we're always staffed at the city government level for the downturn. So in other words, when we don't have the smash parks of the world or the Pella markets or the 400 new housing units, we're staffed that we have workload during the downturns too. And what we always try to do during these upturns is everyone chips in and says, what can I do to help? Let's spread the pain, everyone chips in, and we don't necessarily add people. That way, when the downturns happen, we don't face decisions that, you know, are unpopular of staff and city councils on it as well. So again, this is just a philosophical, not philosophical, it's a business standpoint. And where we came up with this is I talked to our city attorney, she used to be the assistant city attorney in the city of Ames and also the city attorney for Burlington. I said, surely, the cities you work for don't allow people just to call everybody in the city and ask, you know, I was being facetious, but after you get in, these things, constant what-if questions and getting back to people and doing this. She said in cities that she's associated with, they have the same form where you turn in an application. In our case, it's not a week, oftentimes it's two weeks. You state what you want to do, everyone reviews it, you get it back to them. And that's the way bigger cities approach things, but there are also cities with development as well. So again, what we're looking for tonight is initial feedback on this. We will be talking about additional items on May 18th as it applies to planning and zoning. And I had to limit the agenda for tonight just because we have a number of items for this work session. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we're interested in your feedback.
Okay, thank you. All for efficiency, all for customer service, $25 isn't enough.
The part that I liked the most about what you said is that, because I've had several comments and stuff from people, the part that I liked was that they would get one answer from one person. So I think what you said is so true. I think throughout a lot of these processes, people talk to different people. The responses they get don't always line up with each other, and so that part of it I really like. I think it would take a lot of staff training to make sure that if you adopt the application process, that everybody understands how the process is going to work. And if somebody circum, tries to circumvent the process, go to somebody else, they gotta get them back to the process. If you're going to do it, I think you gotta be strict on how you, you know, how it works so that we don't have any of those misunderstandings that always lead to issues for people. And making it the easiest possible for the developers is critical for me.
I agree with Mark, I don't think $25 is enough frankly to do this. The one thing that I thought too, and I think it's so true what you said, that the tried and true developers, this isn't going to be too bad for them, it's the rum-dum Calvans that want to split my lot to build something on there. When it says, either ask for dimensions in reference to survey monuments, you know, those kind of folks are going to have a hard time getting those things together and every easement that's on their property. There's going to have to be a little bit of grace with those folks in some way, somehow. And you know, to do that right balance of efficiency, but yet to be pro-citizen. You know, I don't know where you draw that line, but I think if you, you can't quite have a one-size-fits-all depending on who's coming to the table.
I'd say, my experience, just with talking to folks, I've heard several times, this is kind of a reference to what I said. Well, I talked to so-and-so and they told me this, and I talked to so-and-so and they told me this, and I don't know what to do. And so that, that clear chain of communication. And then also, when that whatever's being communicated, once the decision is made or once the direction, is that it's not, well, here's some, here's some comments or here's some ideas, but like actually, here's a clear path forward for you. It's inside this lane, here's the clear path forward, not just, well, here are our thoughts about it. And then developer comes back two weeks later and now there's some more thoughts about something. And so then it pushes it down the road. But actually, based on our interpretation of code or based on zoning or whatever, here's, here's what we have for you to move, be able to move forward with this project. And I'll agree with the fee. If I was a rum-dum Calvin, then, and I had seven ideas, I'd pay seven $25 fees to get them all on the table.
I'm alright with it, the only one concern I have, and having just gone through this, I know that in coming up with the design and knowing the requirements of the city, like I'm talking the waterline here. And so I went and talked to Denny about it, and I worked close with Aaron Van Rukel, and Denny works close, so. But he was very instrumental in helping me know what I need, which is pertinent information. And I mean, we're looking, when I look at the requirements here, that was pre these requirements. And so we have a, we have a real wealth of information. Now, when it comes down to it, yes, it should be one, I agree there, it should be one. One, one voice, one spoken word. But the actual design of it and how, and size of it. You know, Denny talked about doing it 12 inches, but then he checked, well, no, we're coming. So I don't, I don't know that we want to try and, and maybe that's not what we're talking about here, I don't know, but.
Just to clarify, we're still going to be there helping developers about, such as your situation. What we're specifically talking about is the property split. There are, I think, some consternation gets involved that few of you folks have heard about is when you talk about splits, I want to split, I own this property, I want to split this. City code is very, very clear under subdivision code that if you do that, most of the time the answer is you need to go through a subdivision process. You need to have a plumery plant that talks about the overall game plan. Needs to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, city council for stuff like, should you be extending public infrastructure? And that review requires a higher level of review. And then it also goes through the subdivision plant where you're going to have the final plan. And then it's just a means and bounds description like a plata survey. It's a higher level of planning, there's certain exceptions for a plata survey. What we're specifically talking about is this one aspect. And what happens on this is folks initially have conversations with the planning and zoning department because it is like public infrastructure, Denny's involved, somewhere like the Fear Project, Denny's involved. And we're still going to have that. Where the one voice comes in is the question of, is this a plata survey, can I do this? Or is it a subdivision on it? And that's what we're really trying to get at. And surprisingly, as limited scope as this thing is, you would be surprised how many times we get off tangent where they say, well, so-and-so said this, and they said, no problem, makes perfect sense on this plata survey. And then you go read the code and figure out, well, you can't quite do that. And I'm not sure what the conversation you had with so-and-so, but this is our response and it just puts us behind the eight ball. So what we're trying to do for our little one view is this lies purely under the planning and zoning department, zoning administrator's decision, as opposed to plata survey versus a subdivision process, what's required from a planning level. We want to make sure that the one voice comes from planning and zoning. And it's not misinterpreted by talking to Denny's wealth of information. And oftentimes, keep in mind what gets reported to you folks is a little, there's another side to that story too. And I often hear the other side that you may not necessarily hear. But we want to make sure it's clearly stated where that one voice comes from as it applies to plata surveys or subdivisions in that initial guidance. And that's our planning and zoning department.
And that part I can understand.
The one thing I really liked about that subdivision plan application, you know, in the introduction, you talked about the pre-application conference. I think, I think that really sets the direction, you know, even before the application is there to maybe answer some of the questions that Bruce has had on that. I just wondered if something like that could be broadened for the other types that you were doing too.
Yeah, you know, just, and I know that that gets you the two meetings, or the meeting prior to the application, but maybe that might make the application process go all that much more smooth too, when you have that face-to-face with somebody.
And that will happen, you know, our plans are, we're still going to meet with them initially. And I think where there's some concern of staff is we have the initial meeting. And oftentimes, again, we're not talking about people, I would say, that are used to the development process. You're talking about usually first-time people that don't want to be developers. And then what happens with the first meeting, because they're meeting with a group of us, they're not necessarily who's in charge of making subdivision calls or what you have. And they look at it as, well, plata survey is considerably less than a full subdivision from an engineering standpoint, legal fees on it as well. And so oftentimes, they look at it, well, you should be able to just do a plata survey and build your building on it. And where things get a little misconstrued is when they talk to people and you look at certain things from public infrastructure standpoints and aren't necessarily concerned about land division on it. That's where they may, maybe hear misinformation, and I'm not even going to go that far on it. But what we're trying to do is, as it applies to the zoning world, on it is draw distinct boundaries. Public infrastructure, public works, zoning, planning and zoning, one voice as it applies to, whether it's a plata survey or a subdivision, planning and zoning. And that's, hopefully eliminates some confusion on applicants.
And I do have to say, it costs some money, but like an engineer, and I use garden, wealth of information, knows the process. And I think it's prudent that they go to garden associates or other engineers rather than taking up a lot of staff's time. If there's a, you know, if you're getting ideas, that should be done, not on staff's time, but on their own nickel. And an engineer will certainly help them with that, so in that part, I concur, Michael. I just don't want to make it any harder for development, is all, that's.
And that's certainly not our intent, but I would also ask before we add this final direction, on the 18th, we will be talking about some of the other fees, mainly these subdivisions, and also plata surveys too, we're going to be talking about that and potentially other efficiencies that we can have. And so I wanted to have this conversation, because you're likely to hear about this, and rest assured, we're not going to start this tomorrow. But we want to make sure that we have this conversation standalone. And then in conjunction with next week's meeting, when we talk about the other planning and zoning items, that we can kind of make decisions hopefully in the month of June. And then if there are procedural changes, we can implement those in July after appropriate notice has been out to the people we typically deal with on the professional end, which would be the engineers and also the law firms on the process as well, as it applies to land division.
There's no doubt, once you start this big change, you're going to tweak it as you go to see what works the best.
Okay, alrighty. Know what you need? I believe so.
Anybody else, anything else?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, go right ahead.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Have a drink. Okay, so that's the last thing on my discussion list.
Yeah, we have one resolution here.
Yeah, we got to do this resolution, but, okay. So Resolution Number 6291 entitled Resolution Approving a Purchase Agreement with Reliant Fire Apparatus, Inc. Okay, Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'm actually going to ask Cory to lead the presentation on this. I'm going to try to save my voice for the closed session tonight, so.
Thanks. The resolution you're packing includes a purchase agreement for that pumper truck that we approved during the budget process for the next fiscal year. The previous council meeting, council approved a joint purchasing agreement or cooperative purchasing agreement that allows the fire department to use other agencies like Sourcewell that we're discussing tonight for the purchase of the pumper truck as opposed to a competitive bidding. Sourcewell is the agency selected by the volunteer fire department and specifically Chief Engorham. It's a Minnesota-based organization of elected officials and school board members. So it's a pretty common, commonly-used entity that have about 50,000 government entities comprised of school districts and other governmental entities. And it's, it is used by a bunch of other cities, West Moyn, Moyn, and Kenny, a bunch of cities around the metro, including those around us, so Oskaloosa and Osko. The Pella fire department, or volunteer fire department, excuse me, spoke with multiple of those entities. They started a process for evaluating the truck and found that that purchase method is the standard for purchasing of the pumper truck. The purchase agreement you're packing is for just under $667,000. As I mentioned, the budget, the budget item was included for fiscal year 2023. There's an extended period for construction and delivery of the trucks. So it would not be delivered until after July 1st of 2022, so it'll all be the carcass of the year. So I think in summary, just recommending approval of the purchase agreement in the amount of $666,693 and a ultimately authorizing Chief Engorham to sign the purchase agreement and any of the associated documents for the pumper truck.
Okay, thanks Cory, can I give motion for approval? DeYoung, Brandon Horsey, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horsey?
Yes.
Anstra?
Yes.
Skiva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, any council member of any other business needs to be addressed tonight? Appears all of our public guests left the building, but if anyone on the phone, do you have anything you would like to address the council with this evening? If so, please state your name and address. All right, hearing none, do have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 388.9, Paragraph 1, to discuss marketing and pricing strategies or proprietary information of a city utility if its competitive position would be harmed by public disclosure, not required of.
would be harmed by public disclosure, not required of potential or actual competitors, and if no public purpose would be served by such disclosure.
So moved.
Spoor.
Banister Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call a roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spoor?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Skibow?
Yes.
Motion passed, so we will be moving into closed session. Anyone, if you're still on the phone while we're in closed session, all individuals attending, you can remain on the line upon completion of the closed session. The audio for the meeting will resume. On open session, I don't believe there'll be any motion regarding a closed session. While I'm entertaining motion to adjourn. Move?
Support?
Who said that? Hopkins, Spoor. All in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call a roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spoor?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Skibow?
Yes.
Motion passed, we are adjourned.